Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Welcome to the School Committee meeting, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mia Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
Welcome everybody, Section Three, do the minutes. The agenda inadvertently reads executive session minutes instead of special meeting minutes. It's my fault, special meeting minutes were posted. Motion to approve the regularly scheduled and special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee on January seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, and January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and place them on file. Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Permission to enter, February seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Yeah, all right, no speakers on that. Motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Ms. Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'm sorry, I had a question about permission to enter. I see that Doran Whittier is on for fifty thousand. My understanding is there's been some changes about the project at the Rogers STEM Academy, and I'm just wondering if we should be making this payment now or reassessing where we are with this project.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. This permission to enter item was on the agenda prior to, I believe, the consideration that you're talking about. There was some consideration of an issue that was found this week. I believe from the OPM who I spoke with today that they're working on a solution to that problem. We don't have any information for you about it just now. It doesn't appear to be something that will significantly delay or change the costs, but I don't have that information and it's not been confirmed.
So if I could just say, I don't have any specifics on it either, just that we're looking at, I guess there's a sewer pipe that was found under where they want to put the modules, and is, I guess, just to get to the point with this particular payment, is this for work that's already been done?
I'd like to refer to Dr. Hall, please.
It's work, Ms. Doherty, that would be covered by the extension of time, so to carry the OPM up through July and August.
So it is not work that's already been done? Because my understanding is we're looking at months of delay and a significant increase in costs, like over two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. I just...
I understand that that was...
I have concerns about continuing to put money and then finding out, oh, it's not going to be open for September, and it's not going to meet the deadline for ESER spending. I wonder if we could just put this aside until we have more information? If we could separate this from the other?
I think that's practical, we could do that, thank you.
Throw you to the mayor, would that be okay?
You already voted on it, it was approved.
Well, I tried to get your... I didn't vote yet.
I scouted the committee, no one raised a hand to activate the vote.
Okay, I didn't...
How you want to do it.
All right, so we hadn't finished the vote, right?
Ms. Doherty? Roll call.
If I may, the funds that will not be spent unless they're required, right? So if some, if for some reason the project is delayed or otherwise changed, we need the OPM to be on the work, and if for some reason the OPM is not required, those funds won't be spent. It was just to cover us through the months of July and August.
Okay, all right. I think we are going to need more information on what's happening with that project, though.
Understood.
Moving on, four point two, contract approval for Superintendent William Liam Skinner. Madam Clerk? Press speakers? We took a roll call vote, passing unanimously.
But I didn't vote, and I don't think Mr. Lay voted, right? Did we?
You did vote, yeah.
Oh, we did, okay, sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Ortiz, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to say your remarks.
Laura Ortiz, resident of Lowell. So, and this is no reflection, because you are so lovely. I, you know, it's in my opinion that it's a grave injustice to the citizens of Lowell to continue to rush this vote. You know, I understand the reasoning behind some of it, but, you know, the Blue Ribbon Committee was supposed to be for the people, for them to have their say in every single ward, and rushing a superintendent down the people's throats, just, it's just beyond inappropriate. And, you know, I truly wish you would not vote on this and delay and allow the process to go as it was supposed to be, as it was promised to the people, because this is just, you know, once again, a desegregation move, I'm sorry, a segregation move and denying these citizens and the students their right.
So Ortiz, the process has already been completed, this is just a contract, so if you want to keep your comments to the contract, that'd be great.
Well, it is my comment to the contract, I'd like you to delay it, to delay not approving it, to, you can always vote again, you're a school committee, you can always undo what you did wrongly. You know, I mean, that's my personal opinion, and, you know, the opinion of a lot of people, and I feel that this was just beyond rushed and inappropriate, and, you know, you represent the citizens of the city, you don't, you know, represent self-interest or whoever pushed this behind the scenes, and it's just beyond egregious, but that's my personal opinion and from others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbosa?
Hi, everyone, good evening, thank you for letting me speak today. How's everyone doing today? I did speak when we were removing the title of interim, and I'm here again to speak. I believe that this should be short term, we did not complete the process, that was promised to everyone watching this last year, and hence we have a new committee here, and some of them are still very green, and we need to do this process of the Blue Ribbon Committee. I realize we're pushing this through, but I feel like it should be on a temporary basis, only because we're not completing the process that was promised to the people, the parents, and that's all I have to say right now. Thank you so much, everyone, have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Comments from the committee? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, we did meet about the superintendent's contract, and I would like to make a motion to approve the contract with the change of adding one word, and it's on page five, so it would be Section Seven, Other Benefits, Item D. At the top of page five, it reads that, actually, a year's vacation time entitlement, which is not used before July first of each year of this agreement, may not, add the word "not" there, may not be carried over to the next year.
So just real quick, Ms. Doherty, just, I think we should have a motion to release the minutes of the executive session, so we can get to the change. So, a motion to release the executive session by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Doherty's changed, please, sorry, I should have done that earlier.
So, that was my motion to add the word "not" after the entitlement, which is not used before July first of each year of this agreement, may not be carried over to the next year.
Great, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any other comments? So I'll just say a couple of words, like, once the interim label was removed and Mr. Skinner was put in, I thought the negotiations were as smooth as could possibly be. I think that the committee did a tremendous job standing our case. The superintendent did well in standing his case, we came up, I think, with a plan that we all agreed upon in executive session to move the district forward, and now with this, he'll be in place until June thirtieth in two thousand and twenty-seven, so very happy to get that taken care of, and obviously will be here to support, but also hold the superintendent accountable going forward. So with that being said, a motion to, accept by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Lay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Seven yeas.
Next on the agenda, we go to motions, five point one by Ms. Martin requesting that the administration prepare a report on the current status of reading instruction in the district, specifically addressing the use of balanced literacy versus structured literacy curriculum, and pedi, Ms. Martin, how about that word?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, what I would say is if we could, I'm sorry, pedagogy, but I was hoping to...
If you presented to the curriculum instruction subcommittee, seconded by Ms. Doherty and Ms. Martin.
Sorry, I was just hoping to combine with my colleague's motion number five point seven.
Yeah, you have a reverse speaker too on that, so we combine...
A bundle, if we can.
Five point seven first, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Five point seven by Mr. Rossi, request the superintendent to begin mainstream elementary reading curriculum in order to align with the middle school reading programs throughout the district. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Reach?
Hey, good evening, my name is Kirsten Reich. I'm a resident of Lowell, I live at ninety-six Eleventh Street. I'm really happy to be here, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak on two motion, or on this now combined motion, I love the collaboration, that target reading schools for elementary school students. So I come from a family of educators, my grandma, grandpa, my mom, my stepdad, all, my aunt, all educators, and I'm not an educator myself, but education is near and dear to my heart, and many of you already know that being able to read proficiently by the end of third grade is so crucial, because that is when you're no longer learning how to read, but you're reading to learn. And unfortunately, I learned that only twenty-six percent of our third graders are meeting or exceeding the reading proficiency standards in Lowell, and I know that that's a decline from a couple of years ago, that is definitely due to the pandemic, but it kind of made me wonder, could we do more? And what have others tried, right? And so I read, I read a lot about this in The Globe, I also saw the series Inside Lowell about it, and I'm really interested in the promise of structured literacy for our students. I think there's a lot of evidence to support its use, and I would love to see us look at that. The state has actually promoted a number of programs that are evidence-backed, DESI has, and they've published it on their website, and there's funding for it as well. I think it would be great to see us get ourselves set up in order to take advantage of that. Now, Randolph, the Randolph School District has, is a couple of years into adopting one of those programs, they got funding from the state to purchase the curriculum too, and they're already seeing differences in the levels of reading for their elementary school students, and I think that right now there's a tremendous opportunity, because Governor Healey just announced that she wanted to put, I think it was like twenty-five million additional dollars into supporting these programs, on top of the five million that DESI already offers through grant programs. So I would just ask, I know you all probably want to solve this problem as well, and you'd like to see these rates go up, can we set ourselves up to take advantage of this tremendous opportunity with this funding available and make a real difference in the literacy rates here in Lowell? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I've come to the... I've come to the, you know, come to making this motion in a very similar way. So, what I'd really like us to be able to do is be able to bring to the curriculum instruction subcommittee kind of the existing research that's been done in both these areas. I, too, find the structured literacy approach to be compelling, but I would like us to make this on a, you know, on the basis of current research, and I think if the subcommittee has the opportunity to kind of review this, then we'll be able to bring it to the full committee to make a full discussion, a full decision based on the interest of the whole body.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossi.
Thank you. There are great programs within Lowell Public Schools. I just want to be able to differentiate what we can use for special ed students, ELL students, and then again, regular ed students that's structured and systematic to help our at-risk students to learn. And I guess that has been my motivation behind my previous motions, even asking about the reading curriculums that we've had in our system, so thank you.
So, part of the motion by Ms. Martin was to have it go to a subcommittee, which was seconded, all's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's both passed. 5.2 by Mr. Conway, request superintendent to start the process of a full-time Title I Director for Lowell Public Schools, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a little surprised when I found out that we did not have a full-time Title I Director, and I checked around, and in every system that I checked with, they had one. And then I started to think back, the history of it, and, you know, when you think about it, it was originally called the Chapter One, a number of years ago, as part of that war on poverty, that, you know, funding the education, and that was through, I believe, Lyndon Johnson that put that forward, and that was to help the kids that were in need, you know, that needed that help more than anything else. And, you know, we go back, we have a nice history, should we say, of Title I, that we've had a Title I, full-time Title I Director for over 50 years, and people that, very notable, you know, Bill Lawson and Earl Schaffman and Ted Rorack, and these were all very good people, and, you know, we had Patty Kozieka, too, and I do believe that it's time that we do have, we have that once again, a full-time Title I Director, because of the fact that, you know, we have a very complicated system here. We have, what, almost 16,000 students, very diverse backgrounds and economic backgrounds, and I think that, at this point, we're, I believe, we're looking at somewhere overseeing around $10 million. So, again, not to labor over this, but I really think that we need to start the search immediately instead of waiting, and I realize that there's always obstacles and timing and so forth, but I think that we have the type of staff that certainly can find a good, qualified individual that can take the reins and devote that full-time work to being the chap, excuse me, being the Title I Director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rossi.
I just wanted to see if I could take 5.5 out of order, or, I don't know.
You make it for...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to see if I could take my motion 5.5 out of order.
Yeah, we're still talking about, Mr. Conway, is 5.2? Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've heard a good thing about having Title I in our system, but also, what I've learned is that, like Mr. Conway have just said, that Title I Director, a full-time position for Title I has been, well, we haven't had the Title I Director in full-time for quite a while. So, my question is, why was that? And how could we survive not having a Title I Director full-time in our system, and whether this is something that needed at this time? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to superintendent?
Just superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, it would be speculative on my part to say why it was created that way, but it seems obvious that it was to save funds. So, a previous Title I Director retired and was hired back to do the job part-time, there was a savings there. I'd have to look into, but I'd imagine that some of the duties of a full-time Title I Director must have been reassigned to other people, so that those duties and functions of the Title I Director are being met by other people, but I'll need to take the opportunity to explore and come back to the committee.
Sure.
Thank you. So, when I saw this motion, I thought that normally we saw a request from the administration to request to add a position, and we normally debate quite a bit why the position is needed, but this time, it come out from the school committee instead, so that's something I wonder why that is the case, and whether the administration, what you think about this title?
It was just a request from, you know, the body to look into making it a full-time Director, and I'm sure that request will be taken, if it's approved today, and we'll get a response from the superintendent.
The motion says to start the process. Request, right, request superintendent to start the process, meaning that the Title I Director position, as if that position is already needed and we need to start.
Sure, so we...
So, I just want to hear.
Hear if we need that full-time, or how fast we can start it and so forth, and then maybe as the body will vote on it whether to go forward or not.
Okay.
Makes sense?
But I just wanted to hear whether the position is needed.
Mr. Superintendent, can you please put that in the report when it comes back?
Thank you. Will do.
Excellent. All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. 5.3 by Mr. Conway, ask superintendent to meet with the appropriate LHS Lowell High School staff and begin the process of developing a 2024 presidential mock election for all students and personnel, seconded by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Conway. Yeah, thank you. We have one public speaker, we have one registered speaker.
Mr. Delorby.
My name is Kendrick Delor. I live at 128 Mount Washington Street in the acre. Thank you, Mayor Rourke, Superintendent Skinner, thank you, Mr. Conway. Lowell High School is the sole public high school in our district, and with almost 4,000 students, the halls of LHS really do represent the future of our country. Civic engagement and our participation are key to making any sort of tangible change in this country, and I think it's really crucial to stress that to all students. Not only will a massive mock election at our school get students talking about our nation's leader, but it will also help us as young adults form our own distinct societal views, while also educating us on how to be active members of our republic. Our nation is a democracy, but only if we can keep it by truly making, by truly trying to make things better together as one human race. Finally, I want to call on Mr. Skinner to work with the office of the elections office with the City of Lowell, to begin developing plans to host a voter election drive at this school for either the end of this school year or perhaps the beginning of next. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank the speaker for your words. I took a look at this mock election, and to be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, when I saw the results in our last election, we had, we had less than 7,500 people that voted, which actually resulted in a less than 10% of the registered voters that came out. And that's sad, because we've been working on this on all different levels, whether it's through the schools, whether it's the city council, the school committee, different organizations, and it's a shame that we have 75,000 registered voters and we only had 7,500 people that came out. You know, if we go back to 2021, that was a little bit better, and we went up to 17%, 18%, which is still horrible, with all the effort and the energy that's put into it. So, I said to myself, I went down to Greg Pappas, and we talked about it, and I said, how many days can an individual vote before the election? Because we're always trying to make it easier for individuals to vote, make it available, and we figured it out, and it's literally, we could vote 40 days on 40 nights before the election, and plus the one day on the election, too. So, I thought about it, and I said, you know, let me just go back and see if I can find a little bit of information. So, I'm just going to give you two very quick examples. Back in 1977, there were 41,947 registered voters, and 21,000 actually came out to vote. I mean, we're talking 51%. And if you go back just a little bit further, and this will be the last one, there were 44,000 registered voters in the City of Lowell, and 35,000 of them came out to vote. So, what are we doing wrong today? We're trying and trying and trying, but you know what? It just doesn't seem to be working. So, I thought, and I went back into, in my history bank there, and I can remember going back a number of years ago when I was teaching history and government, and I had a mock election, and it goes all the way back to, I believe, it was Duquesne.
Was that 1977?
A little before, a little before you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
And I will say that what we did is we got all the different departments involved at Lowell High School. We have over 3,500, 3,600 students over there, and, for example, the history department, they did the research on the election, and they really put a great deal of effort, all the classes did. The math, they calculated, the ballots, the art, they did, you know, they did different types of brochures and so forth. Anyways, to make a long story short, everyone was enthused, and I can remember this cafeteria worker saying to me, hey, I'd like to vote, too, in that mock election. And then it dawned on me, I said, you know what? Why don't everybody? So, we had all the teachers, we had all the administrators, cafeteria workers, everyone actually voted, and the kids were very excited about it because they were, they were seeing this firsthand, and they were part of the process, which I do believe can help to carry over to an election, and that they will come out to vote. Because going back to that one point, and that one point is that we have 40 days, when these numbers, these very, very high numbers of people that voted, it was one day. And I just want to share one quick story very quickly with you. My grandmother used to say to me all the time, she'd say, well, tomorrow, David, is election day, and I'll be ready at 10 o'clock. And I was probably in my twenties, and sure enough, she'd come out of the bedroom, and she'd be all set. She'd have the pocketbook and the hat and the white gloves, and we'd be off to vote. And I always said the same thing to her when we got back in the car, I said, who'd you vote for on the other? And she'd say, that's between God and myself. I'd say, okay. One day, I said to her, I said, you know, why is it so important that you vote? And she said to me, well, she said, I'll tell you why. When I was a girl, I wasn't allowed to vote. I didn't have the, I didn't have the right to vote, and also, there were a lot of young boys that fought for my right to vote, and I figure I would be disrespecting my gender and all those people that fought for us. And I look and I say, wisdom from a woman that went to the fifth grade and worked in the mills, and I think there was a lesson to be learned. So, I'm not saying this is the magic bullet, but, you know, let's try it, and let's put a good effort forward, and let's see what the results are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. 5.4, a motion by Mr. Bahu, a motion to have the superintendent and the chief academic officer look into the feasibility of developing Chapter 74 Voc Ed programming into the Lowell High School curriculum, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Mr. Bahu?
I put in this motion because I'd like to have our superintendent look into the feasibility of adding vocational programming to Lowell Public School system. If you've paid attention to the news in the past number of years, there are not enough vocational seats available across the whole state of Massachusetts. The waitlist, well, I can do this, the waitlist at Greater Lowell Tech is currently at 600 students. The waitlist across the state of Massachusetts gets to 10,000 pretty quickly. Just for instance, of how many applications Greater Lowell took in 2023, there were 1,427 eighth graders in Lowell Public Schools, 1,001 applications went to Greater Lowell Tech to be, to have that curriculum taught to them, to have Chapter 74 Vocational Programming taught to them. Of those 1,001 applications, 550 were offered seats, 105 went ahead and chose not to go, and 444 seats were taken. Of that being the case, there are over 400 seats on the waitlist from Lowell Public Schools to attend Greater Lowell Tech. Now, I know that this, our school district is not equipped to have an electrical shop or have a carpentry shop or have a plumbing shop, but I do know that there are 40 Chapter 74 programs, Voc Ed programs, that could be had here in Lowell Public Schools. One of the programs, for instance, would be a criminal justice program. Over at Greater Lowell Tech, they do not offer a criminal justice program. We do know that we're down on police officers, we do know that we're down on corrections officers, we know that we're down on the security people over at the airport, I'm trying to think of their term, but. Also, another program that we could offer would be ISN, which is essentially cybersecurity. So, we wouldn't need a large area, we could use ordinary classroom space with computers and teach cybersecurity, which would make kids job-ready, so, you know, upon graduating high school. You know, we have a pretty high dropout rate. A lot of kids do want to work with their hands, a lot of kids may or may not want to go off to college. So, I think this would be a good option to not only give kids the opportunity to be work-ready upon graduation, it would also help them graduate, and secondly, it would probably help the attendance rate at all, which we know is a major issue as well. So, I ask this committee to give this motion some consideration and hope to move forward with this.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I think this is an excellent motion. I'm very open to exploring opportunities that will engage our students more, and I think that you've made some good points about the need. My only, and it would be a friendly amendment, if you're open to it, Mr. Bahu, would be after Lowell High School to say and/or middle school curriculum, because I think there might be some opportunities at the middle school level to bring in some vocational subjects, and I'd be open to hearing from the administration what that might be, but I know we have, let's say, with the woodworking, we have a lot of equipment that we haven't let go of, that we could maybe use at the middle school level that wouldn't have the same limitations in terms of programming at the high school level, to just be open to looking at that as well, but I think it would be very helpful information for this committee to have.
Ms. Martin?
Would you be open to that?
Okay, yeah, absolutely, I would be open to that. As a matter of fact, I know that we have Makerspace over at the Stock Loser School, and they're looking to go ahead and have more kids interested in a hands-on programming on their after-school program there. on their after-school program there itself. So I know that that is something that has, that is offered across the state through the state of Mass Tesi. So I think that it would be a welcome addition to not only a chapter 74 programming, but helping kids really get a feel for what they're trying to do and give them hands-on opportunities.
So there's a motion to friendly amend on the floor, seconded by Mr. Conway. Then now we'll go to Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add, what I think is really particularly compelling around this is that if we're able to create these tracks that don't already exist. So my concern, as I think you kind of referenced, Mr. Bahu, is our ability to replicate existing programs is limited.
Right.
And why do we want to, you know, why would we? But I think the idea that we'd be able to kind of look at specific program tracks that I think would be really compelling for students and be able to create them at the, at the high school, I think that would be of, of great benefit to our students. So I'd certainly be supporting the motion and looking forward to seeing the information as it comes back.
I think it's a terrific motion, it's very interesting. I mean, should we send it to a subcommittee? I think there's so much exploration to do with something like this, where I could really, you know, get into the middle schools or go even further down from the high school.
Well, I'm hoping the curriculum-
Do you want to report first, then go to a subcommittee?
Yeah, a report would be lovely and then we can sort of go in that direction.
All right, so we have a motion, one second, superintendent. Was made by, yes, but Ms. Doherty made a friendly amendment. Right, one second. Excellent, okay. Could you just read that, please, before you go to the superintendent?
It's a motion to have the superintendent, chief academic officer look into the feasibility of developing chapter 74 voc ed programming into the Lowell High School curriculum and other middle school curriculums.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I thought it was worth commenting that it's a very welcome motion for the school department. It's not only seems like a sensible motion for all the reasons Mr. Bahu articulated, but an exciting one. And I think that we know that there are very, very many more of our students applied through vocational school than are able to be admitted there. And so those students come to Lowell High School having had in mind a different type of education for themselves. And so then we have these issues with engagement and with dropout and so on, and we're trying different other ways to engage our students and bring up their attendance. So it's, it's a sensible motion, it's an exciting motion, and it's one that we welcome the opportunity to explore. Thank you.
Assistant, Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I applaud, applaud this motion because I, I think that it's a fantastic opportunity for students that, you know, that didn't make that, that cut to the voc and yet we're going to have some options potentially here. Because, and I think that Mr. Bahu, when he mentioned the attendance, it certainly will have an effect on attendance and cutting. And that, that also talks about going further after the high school education. So it, it will make, I think it'll make a difference in the dropout rate too. So again, I applaud you for that motion. Excellent. Thank you.
Just real quick, I also feel that it is a great motion and it comes at the right time, that we are planning to go to a new high school and I'm optimistic that we will be on schedule. Going to be a great new high school and having this program enhanced, in the, in the program, in the high school is, is a plus. So thank you.
This, this motion was meant to provide more support in terms of financial wellness motion that my former colleague Stacy Thompson had put in place, that I know has already started in the middle school, but to help to continuously stay put with the elementary, middle school and into the high school.
Just want to support this, this motion, it sounds, it's wonderful. And we heard around a lot that we need to have a financial literacy program at the school. So great motion.
I think, was there a registered speaker on this? If I could suspend the rules and ask for State Rep. Elliott to speak on this motion?
First of all, let me apologize for not registering to speak. I completely forgot about the rules here. There, Rodney Elliott, 15 Cresta Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the school committee, Mr. Superintendent. I have been in conversation with school committee woman Del Rossi about this and there's been, I would say, some progress, positive movement on Beacon Hill relative to financial literacy. Just this, maybe about a month ago, the committee on education that I attended, there's a bill 4199, an act relative to personal financial literacy. Mr. Ross, Mr. Rossi's asked me to come down and I'm happy to do that. The original sponsor of the bill is Ryan Hamilton of Methuen, but I am a co-signer on the bill and it has gained some attention, as I had mentioned. You know, Massachusetts, we, we lead the nation in, I would say, educational achievement in many areas. Financial literacy is one of them where we lag behind. There are 25 states that already provide dedicated financial literacy classes to all students required before graduation. You know, part of this bill is to set up a financial literacy trust fund to be administered by the Department of Education and secondary education. This fund would be focused on communities where students may be less likely to have a good financial literacy and it's really personal finance exposure. And the fund will be used for things like professional development, training, purchase and use of financial educational resources and collaboration with higher education institutions. So I, I do recall when I was the mayor, going to various schools with local banking institutions to expose young students to savings accounts, see if they can open up savings account. This, this does take it to another level. I know there's, I know there's lots of curriculum that needs to be fitted into an already very crowded teaching day, but financial literacy will prepare students to make decisions on budgeting, credit, you know, investing in the future and making, just making smart decisions before they make decisions that affect them for the rest of their life. There is evidence to suggest those students that do have financial literacy in high school make better decisions and have, you know, better decisions in life and can, you know, pursue the American dream without being, you know, loaded with debt. So I thank you for the time for coming down to speak. I think it's a good bill. I think, you know, there, there's an opportunity to pass this and, you know, support from the Lowell School Committee and the superintendent will go a long way. Today was joint rule 10 day where bills will be reported out and then initiated into the legislative process. So I think it's a great opportunity and I think Lowell and, and the surf communities will benefit from this very trust, this educational financial trust fund. So thank you for your time, I'm going to get a long, long agenda. Any questions, if you have any? No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Gisella?
Hi. So I can't second motions, but if I could, I would second this one. So coming from a student perspective, and I come from a first generation of immigrants, I have like no financial literacy. I learned my financial literacy through TikTok. I just found out what a 401K is like this year. So, and I know he said that it's like busy for the classes, but I think if it was an elective offered, even just at high school for an elective, I would take it, I think many students would take it and it would fill up a course or something, if we could do it for like a math class or something like that. So I think that's important, especially to stop the generation of like poverty and all that. So, yeah.
Well said. Other comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion 5.6 by Ms. Del Rossi, request a superintendent to review and reestablish the multi-tiered system of supports in order to review the teacher-assisted team structures assuring interpreter availability, seconded by Ms. Doherty, Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes, so this motion has been placed by me because I've heard of a great deal of school systems who have kind of lost that tiered system of instruction where we're targeting a teacher-assisted team for students who may or may not need special education or maybe just tiered instructions and especially those students who may have a family that may need an interpreter involved and what they can do to help to promote their own child's education. So I just want to make sure that these systems are in place in all schools and interpreters are, are available for all school districts who are doing the tiered support systems, whether it's a tier one, tier two, tier three. So parents are aware that teachers' eyes are on them, social worker eyes are on them. There, there is a concern on some level and interpreter availability is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.8 by Ms. Del Rossi, request a superintendent to report on the status of what schools have received migrant students and what services such as ELO programs and trauma-based services that they're receiving to help them acclimate, seconded by Mr. Conway, Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes, I'm hearing there have been students just put in mainstream classes and expected to assimilate and acclimate into the environment and it's disrupting our students' learning environment overall. So what type of trauma-based supports are in place for these students right now who have just been plopped into an educational classroom? Do we have, I know when I first started in Lowell Public Schools, we had specialized ELL classes, but it does not seem like Lowell Public Schools has that anymore. It seems like it's just go into a classroom and good luck. So we are very aware that we have an influx of migrants and they're going to need a great deal of support. So I just want to know what is available for them right now to access and what is happening in especially these elementary schools, pre-K, kindergarten, with these students who cannot communicate.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I welcome this motion for the opportunity to think about something that Ms. Del Rossi raised, which is the waves of new students, new population of English language learner students to our schools and how we're coping with that, some of the answers for which we don't have today, but this motion is certainly going to prompt us to think about it. One important detail I want to though say for the record, our schools have those special programs Ms. Del Rossi referred to, we have newcomer classrooms. So students who come to Lowell and who don't speak English are not simply placed in mainstream classrooms, they go to newcomer classrooms where they can gain English language proficiency before they are mainstreamed.
I guess I would like to know a list of those schools that have the newcomer classrooms because what I'm hearing is that that's not what is happening. That, and that is what stemmed from this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.9 by Ms. Del Rossi, request a superintendent to revisit the cell phone policy at the high school in order to be inclusive of potential damages to phones and parents, student rights to sign a proper policy that was not included for them to sign off on in September 2023, maybe, 24?
Just going forward.
Seconded by Mr. Lay, Ms. Del Rossi.
This is just to say, we're going to have parents sign off on this in September of 2024. Parents are on board with this. We agree with you. We know what you're going to do if my student refuses. We know what the process is because I don't think parents were afforded that opportunity right now and in terms of how quickly this cell phone policy was implemented. And I'm not saying it was quickly implemented because I know there was a lot of time spent into it, but I am saying that parents were not on board with this and that could cause a lot of division. Thank you.
We also have a registered speaker on this.
Mr. Hung?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's thanks to school committee member, superintendent and the class senator and everyone here at home. My name is Taylor Hung, I live at 22 Canton Street in Lowell and tonight I stand before you with a few students here from Lowell High School to speak on their behalf, on behalf to support this, this motion by school committee member Del Rossi, motion 5.9. As a former student of Lowell High School and as a sibling to, to one of the current students, I'm here to advocate for this motion. Over the past, over the past few weeks, I have engaged with numerous students who do not fully support this new cell phone policy. And I have also heard descending voice from adult in our community as well. I urge the school committee, the superintendent, the Lowell High School administration to revisit and engage in further discussion on this matter. It is accutio, accutio to gather additional imports and input, it's important to gather additional input from parent and student regarding how best to process. While locking phone away before class may seem reasonable, it also presents challenges. Consider the scenario of an emergency within the school ground. Implementing such as a policy unintentionally create a barrier to student quickly notify their parent or family member about the situation. I'm referring to emergencies such as a school shooting, fire and other unforeseen event. While we hope and pray that such a tragedy, tragedy event never occurred, the unfortunate reality is that they become increasingly common across our country. Lastly, I am urging the school administration and the school committee to consider implementing this policy to cover the cost of damage or loss of the phone while it's in the box in the, in the classroom. Because that is a school responsibility to keep that phone safe before it go back after the class, if you want to continue implementing this new cell phone policy to our high school student. Right now, the reason why I mention this, because right now, under the new cell phone policy with the small link at the bottom of the flyer does not mention any cover or, or, or cover the cost if the phone being damaged or being lost. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. I hope the school, the school administration and the school committee will consider this motion and revisit this new cell phone policy recently enforced at our high school. High school is a space to support, for students to grow and learn how to be respectful, responsible and accountable, to be prepared for the next step in their career, whether they go to college or workforce. This can be one of those lessons that can continue to help teach our student to do that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. One more.
Laura Ortiz.
Should I say it again?
If you want to give your address, it'd be nice.
Laura Ortiz, resident of Lowell. So in regards to this policy, the questions and concerns that I had, or I should just say concerns that I had, are the translation, there's an awful lot of policies that go out and they are not translated into the ethnic languages of the district. So how do you expect these students to understand, let alone, you know, when we have newcomers that maybe, you know, aren't yet acclimated to the English policies as they're written? And so how are you going to, you know, make them understand, as well as the parents? You know, we've got an awful lot of parents that- that perhaps do not speak English and, you know, looking at Springfield, Boston, other cities, they have absolutely no problem. We're translating the policy. So, I'm not really quite sure even on logistic websites whether or not. The second thing that I wanted to mention is nowhere in this policy whatsoever does it talk about the medical students, the students that have diabetes and other medical conditions that use their phones as part of their medical device and management. And I'm not really quite sure and understanding why a teacher is going to take a medical device addition that could be telling the student that their blood sugars are low, you know, other different medical conditions. There's, there's no waiver. There's no room for these children whatsoever. So, you know, I, I'm not really quite sure why a policy was implemented that did not directly talk about, you know, having some students that might be exempt and should be exempt as well as, you know, in the event of an emergency, if the teacher's busy trying to hand out cell phones, I'm not really quite sure with law enforcement if this is, you know, one of the best policies as opposed to, instead of, you know, punishing the students and removing every single cell phone as if they did something when they didn't, perhaps maybe do it back, you know, do it the way that it should be done where if you continue to ask certain students, have a meeting with the parents and approach it in a different way because I'm kind of concerned that we're going to have a teacher standing there that could be in the line of horrific moment and get injured or students while everyone's trying to rush to get these cell phones. So, I just, I don't really think this policy was thought up. I don't think enough areas of medical and safety and security were thought about as to whether or not this rollout quickly of a policy to adjust the teachers' needs and getting the children to focus had, you know, is something that not only should be revisited, it should be completely rewritten and adding in a couple of other areas, but that was just my thought. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I, I went down to visit Lowell High School and check out those lock boxes. Wanted to see exactly what they look like and, and the staff shared with me how the process worked. And, you know, in many cases, from what I understand, the teachers themselves don't even touch the cell phone. The kids will put them in the, in the little slots. You know, since that time of my visit, I've received a number of calls and text messages from my former colleagues because I spent most of my life down at Lowell High School and they're telling me that works. And students, which I was a little surprised at, the students said that the idea, the idea of the cell phones is actually welcome. They like the break from the, from the phones themselves. And one teacher said to me, it is, it's teaching them some social responsibility. Other comments that I heard was improved academic performance, less bullying, less distractions and more time on learning. But what's most important here, what was shared by a couple administrators and I certainly, I've worked with them before in the past, they said to me that every week on a Friday, they sit down and they review what has happened during that week and if there was any glitches that came up and, and how would they evaluate that situation? You know, they, they were evaluating and tweaking it on a constant basis, which I think is a great idea because that's the type of a policy. And listen, that's what we do with any policy. You're always tweaking it. You're always trying to make it better. Is it perfect? Probably not. But I know that they are sitting down on a regular basis to make sure that the, everyone is safe and that education takes place and they're refining the template because remember, this is something new. They have to create a template and especially when you're talking about the size of the school of that size. So, I certainly was, was happy the way they were approaching it at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to kind of put it in context too. I was somebody from the very beginning who had some hesitation about this policy. I like, if a student keeps it away, why, why do you have to take it away? It's just a matter of keep your, keep your phone in your pocket or in your backpack when you're in school. But we had a task force of teachers on their own time who did a lot of research and came to us multiple meetings, multiple subcommittee meetings, as was mentioned. We did do a bit of vetting about this and they made a compelling argument about, at least from me, giving it a shot. So, this is a pilot and it was meant to be revisited. And I appreciate having this motion where we're bringing out some areas, some gaps. I mean, tonight was the first time I thought about the idea about, of medical necessity and blood sugar levels or if there's damage or whatever other contingencies need to be looked at. We will be revisiting this policy. We wanted to give them the school year to try it out and certainly collect more inclusive information, get more information from parents, get more information from students because perhaps they weren't as representative as they could have been in this decision. But as a parent myself, we all know that sometimes we make decisions that our kids don't actually like, takes away some freedom or some choice that we, for whatever reason. So, I really think we need to give it the course, finish the school year, have them perhaps under the basis of this motion, have them start to collect some other information, look at what are some of the gaps in the policy that maybe need to be refined. And certainly we will, we will be revisiting it as we said we would do, but to give it a chance. As we know, this is not, this issue with cell phones being a problem in school is not limited to Lowell. It is happening everywhere and districts across the country and across the state are looking at various ways of handling it. So, I welcome this information of areas that maybe need to be addressed or looked at differently, but I think that we stay the course and give them the opportunity to run the pilot and revisit it as we planned, which I believe was going to be in the spring, but I would defer to Superintendent Skinner. Thank you.
Any other comments by the members? Superintendent?
Thank you. Much of the comment that I intended to make, Ms. Doherty has just made. I wanted to remind the committee that it is a pilot and that we've committed to returning to you at the end of the school year with a rendition of how did it work out and what issues there are with it and then have the committee decide on, on the way forward. So, there's lots and lots I'd love to say beyond that and I refrain from doing that, but I do think it's worth mentioning one part, which is that no student is denied any device that's related to their health, including cell phones. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
I think, you know, I like the idea of us revisiting the policy because I know that went through a few meetings in the school committee and the previous school committee in July as well as I believe maybe in November. And I'm sure there's a lot, a lot of things to be considered. You know, I, I think cell phones can be an issue in the sense of always referring to the cell phone, you know, during the school day and such like that, but I am open to ideas of revisiting this policy and seeing what would work best. And I worry. I worry for the idea of potential damages to phones. Sometimes, you know, kids may drop a phone on their own before class and not necessarily turn it on and put it in the dispenser or the holder and then take it out and try to turn it on and realize that it's just not working. And, you know, they may, you know, think that it wasn't them. So, you know, I worry about potential damages because I know if one student may, you know, get the school district to cover a cost of their $1,000 phone or try to fix their $1,000 phone and other students hear about it, maybe they could sort of begin to, you know, have that discussion and possibly try to get the school district to cover that as well. So, the way this motion is written, I just, I'm a little nerved up about the potential damage part of it. Therefore, you know, as much as, you know, I like the idea of revisiting the policy, I just don't know that I could back this motion.
Any other comments? Madja Selig?
I think I'm more concerned about actual damage to the cell phones. I think there would be more likeliness of having a cell phone broken than a kid crying wolf to get a new one. One of the, Tar Hong said about the fires and the shooting or whatever. We had a fire drill or a fire recently. It was an electrical one and I seen, I seen boxes are already broken. They're kind of cheap. They're a little, I think if we revisit this, we would need at least better boxes. I know so many tax dollars have already been put into it, but the boxes, a lot of them are already broken. I've seen teachers, the same phones that we took away from the students, I've seen students carrying the boxes instead of teachers. So, there's already a lot of non-conformity with this policy. So, I think it definitely needs to be revisited, especially with parent acknowledgement, student input. I don't, there's only two students input on this phone policy and I've, I talked to them and collected data from them and they said that they were rarely allowed to talk. They were cut off consistently at those committees and overall, there was no student input. And I, I agree, parents do do things that students don't like. However, we just talked about making a mock election for our students because we're, some of us are voting next year. Some of us are already 18 years old and, and it's important that we have, you know, an opportunity to talk about things and dissent to things that we don't like, especially if we're just talking about having a mock election. And I also think it goes against the portrait of a graduate that our school preaches so much. But yeah, I just think it definitely needs to be revisited and, you know, I'm a student, so I dissent, but I think majority of us dissent. And yeah, and it was already implemented a month ago. So, I don't, I don't see much change either from it. I mean, students are still going to keep their phones. Students still do keep their phones on them. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think Ms. Doherty has talked about it really well, that this is a pilot program and superintendent also mentioned that. And right now, it is a policy and I just want to, I heard from both sides, students who are favoring it, students who are not in favor of it, but at the end, I think this is the policy that we have in place now and I would just want to urge that we follow the policy. And I think like superintendent said, we will look at it again at the end of the school year. If, if the student, the students behave really well and, and we feel that there's no need to enforce this policy, then that may be a good thing. So, I just want to, at the meantime, just follow the policy and, and do your best, do the best you can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Quickly from, from up here, you know, I know a lot of effort and time went into this policy to put it in place. You know, I haven't heard it not working in any other community. I'm happy the superintendent explained as a type one diabetic that has my blood sugar on my phone with alerts that do go off. It gets too low or gets too high. So, I was happy to hear that response. I think we need to give it the time that it deserves going forward and maybe at the school year, Mr. Superintendent will give a report on how it went and any possible changes could and should be made. With that being said, I'm out. Quick roll call.
Mia Ruck?
No.
Mia Bahu?
No.
Mr. Conway?
No.
I'm a little confused about what you're voting on.
The motion to 5.9.
Because, I'm sorry, because you mentioned something with September 24. But we, by default, we are going to revisit it at the end of June anyway. So, this motion is, why?
The motion is to reopen a policy, yes or no? The motion, I guess to revisit the policy, no? So, that's why I just think of the motion. That's why I'm voting no. However, however you like, it's totally up to you.
Yes. Is it my turn?
Ms. Dar Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Four yeas, three nays. Approved.
5.10, request superintendent breakdown enrollment numbers per school, distributed by grade, each class size per grade, disaggregated by grade, each class size per grade. Seconded by Ms. Doherty, Ms. Dar Rossi.
Yes, this motion is just to see if there's any disproportion per school, per grade whatsoever. I think we have a lot of students with a lot of needs per, per grade level, per class. I'm hoping to disaggregate this data out even more eventually, but I would like a number on students per school, per grade and to see basically what's going on with the numbers in the classes. Thank you.
All the comments? All in favor say aye. opposed, no. Motion passes. 5.11 by Mr. Lay, request superintendent to create a spreadsheet to be filled by staff at each school. The spreadsheet should list all schools in the first column and list any maintenance slash work that needs to be done in a separate column that corresponds to each school, one item in each box. This sheet should be updated and reported on monthly by the school committee. Seconded by Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion would address some of the concerns, the concerns that the staff working in the school have when they said that there are a lot of stuff need to be fixed in the school and they couldn't find a way to report and they wanted to know when the work's going to be done. So, I understand this is going to be a mess, a big, a big data because we have 29 buildings and, and we have a lot of work needs to be done. So, I suppose what we can do to address the need for, for the staff to feel comfortable that their concern is heard is all they want. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lay, I noticed this motion and the next one both call for monthly reports, which essentially means that we would be reporting to the committee every other meeting, right? And so, I'm wondering if it would be acceptable to report quarterly? We have a KPI report, which is key performance indicators and those indicators could include how we're doing with maintenance and it would be automatically included each quarter, if that's acceptable?
Let me think. Yeah, I do that.
So, I want you to, 5.12 is the same, basically the same motion. So, request superintendent to provide a report of incomplete IT tickets submitted to each school. Please include what the ticket is regarding and the date it was submitted by staff. Request these reports to be submitted now.
Quarterly, quarterly.
To the school committee. Excellent. So, if I could just in here, do you have a one registered speaker on 512? But if I could just have either Mr. Underwood or to come up and just express the importance of school dude and how important I think the city wants us to, wants the school and principals to, it's something that, Mr. Underwood?
Good evening, everybody. So, exactly. Clarify what you wanted me to explain to him on how the school dude operates.
So, it's a ticket that's created by school, by principals that put all the requested work into the system that can be easily tracked, correct?
We do. So, we have a school dude work order system that typically is run by the senior custodian. So, any work that is requested through either teachers, administrators or through visual site is, there's a work order placed in that. That work order is then directed to my office. From my office, we direct it to DPW. We pick out the craft, whether it's plumbing, electrical, et cetera. That then goes to DPW, assigned to a technician. When it's completed, it goes back to the senior custodian in the building and then back to us for clarification that it's been closed. Recently, we've given credentials to all of the principals in the system that did not have it. Most of them did, but as you know, we've had a lot of turnovers in administration. So, at present time right now, everybody has access, principals, senior custodians have access to that school dude. What we'd like to, to, what I, I guess what my wish would be is that other than the senior custodian, it's viewing only because somebody has to track and somebody has to be in charge of watching, you know, entering and stuff. And you don't want to start getting into, well, I thought you entered it and I thought you entered. Well, you told me about it. Somebody has to be in charge of that. So, we do have credentials for the, for the administrators, but it would be our wish in administration just for easy tracking and so on. So, is for that to be exactly what I was saying or viewing only. It's up to the senior custodian, my office and DPW department to really oversee it and maintain it. As far as viewing it and tracking it, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, but I do think it would complicate things if, if, if more, you know, more and more people added to adding work orders. It confuses it and it also builds in, it builds in an excuse. Well, I thought you were doing it or I thought you were doing. you were doing it. So that, that would be of this. Any other questions about that, if that didn't answer at all?
By using that system, it's to easily track a quarterly report back to the school committee of what's been handled and what's still outstanding, correct?
Yeah, we could, well, we could do the same thing, we could give them credentials to look at the school dude, and you could view all the, all the work orders in the, in the thing. What we'd, what we'd prefer, again, is that, you know, we're not entering work tickets. The problem I would have with actually putting a spreadsheet together, that's a thing, it, it creates problems for schedules, and it also creates a problem for prioritizing workloads. If a, if a principal or a teacher puts in a work order for a shade or a doorknob, and it's been there for several months, it's going to trigger phone calls and whatnot, but it also has to be prioritized. Obviously, our boiler and our HVAC work, and our plumbing leaks take priority over certain items. So unless that's clarified, everybody, there'll be certainly some concerns for things that are low priorities that may sit on that spreadsheet for a little longer than that particular teacher may think necessary.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Underwood, by the committee?
Thank you.
While we have you here, Mr. Underwood, I just figured I'd ask you a few questions, because, you know, the Pawtucket Memorial has been, you know, on front page news for a bit, and I know there's some heat issues going on, and I was reading today in today's Lowell Sun, there is a RFP for air handling equipment, and I believe that it's for that school, but there's also the mold issue. So I'm sort of curious, because, you know, we do have, I'm sure, a lot of the teachers and staff watching our school committee meeting right now, and they might want to be informed on, you know, what's been done. And I know we have the option of school dude, and, you know, moving forward, we'll try to, you know, look at that, and listen, and, and understand what's happening with Mr. Lay's motion, and identify exact areas, but, you know, while we have you here, I'm going to ask you a few questions about a few schools, because I think it's pretty important that we share that with the public.
Absolutely. So on the Pawtucket Memorial mold situation, we continue the investigation on that school. Mechanical repairs are ongoing, we've, we've done a, a lot of repairs to the building, there's still some out, you know, some things that we still have left to do. We continue to do air quality testing every, every month, we share those reports with staff, administrators, Board of Health, we continue to monitor those, we've had a couple of incidents where we've had a small spike in maybe one or two areas, we go in there and we retest those immediately to make sure that it is either a, a fluke situation where, you know, kids came in, whatever, but we investigate if there's a high, high reading in those, and we retest for those. We've got, we continue with the building forensic contract that we have right now on there, trying to get some answers to what's going on. We have logic automation under contract, working on controls for the dampers and air, air intakes. So there are no real answers to identify the exact problem over there, but I think what we're doing right now is on the right track, and I, and I do think that if we get all the mechanicals running as designed, that we may, that may be the answer. So we will keep you informed as more information comes available on the mechanic repairs in there.
And that speaks to the heating issue as well, right?
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is a, I believe it's, and Paul St. Seer is here, if you have any questions to him, I think the heating RFP is for the chiller, that one, all correct?
There's, there's.
Yeah. Yeah, Paul, I'll give you, I'll give you a heads up on the, more of the mechanical work that the city's been doing.
Okay, don't go far, I might have a few more questions.
So, so there has been ongoing work for the mechanical systems there that we've identified as part of the, across the entire district, we've actually upgraded the controls, the whole front end side, and the platform that we're using within all of the buildings. Obviously, Pawtucketville was one of them, so we're now moving into kind of that phase two portion of that. So the things that we're able to easily identify as far as mechanicals that were faulty, we've been addressing, ordering parts in, there are still things that are on order, AHU2 is one that I think of off the top of my head. We've had the design completed to do the chiller there, and that's going out to bid, so that's happening, so, you know, depending on the lead time for the chillers, they're, you know, 25 to 30 weeks out, depending on the model that we'd be getting, puts us, you know, towards the end of the summer for that arriving, and so we'd be making those upgrades as well. So the idea is to really get to a point where we're 100% with all of the mechanicals there, which is certainly the recommendation for, you know, anyone dealing with any kind of a mold issue, so we want that to be 100%. We've also identified some issues that have been ongoing with the roof. I had the good fortune of working on the school side and knew the custodian who was there when it reopened, as, after the renovation that went on there, and shortly thereafter, they did start having some issues with, with leaks in the gym, for instance. So that's on our list as far as a capital improvement, where the gym roof at least will be replaced, and we're also looking at the other parts of the building as far as what roof issues could be there, and how they're vented and so on.
Okay, and do you believe the chiller would help, you know, balance off the heat within the building, because of course, some rooms are 90 and some rooms are 50?
Well, exactly, so when we have the chiller in place to, to be able to, to, number one, evaporate the moisture that's in the air that they're experiencing, that's, that's the overwhelming need that would happen there. So to have that in place, especially through those shoulder seasons where we experience that high humidity, for sure, it's going to, to, to help the, the issue there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Doherty? Mr. Lay, justice of say? Mr. Lay, you guys just hit up first.
I apologize.
No, I will wait, I just wanted to thank Mr. St. Seer and Mr. Underwood for making themselves available for tonight's meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, and that's why I wanted to jump to this, these two questions while we have the two gentlemen here. My first question is regarding the letter from the Board of Health, where it talks about best practices that should be happening not only at the Pawtucketville, but at all our schools, and are you both on board for what needs to happen to make sure that occurs? You're aware of the letter and the recommendations?
Absolutely.
And my second question is, what is the number of outstanding work orders right now for the schools?
I'm happy to provide that to you, I just don't have the number off the top of my head, and I would like to get it so we have the right information for you, because there's some clarity.
Can you ballpark, are we over 100?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thousand?
I would say for active, there's, I see you shaking your head, Ms. Del Rossi, I, there's, I, there are duplicate work orders that have been in the system for a long time, and that's in the process of being cleared up. So I would say in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a clean file to be able to look at. There's been a lot of effort on that side, and I guess to go back a little bit to the, the way the school dude process works, and I agree with what Rick had to say, as far as having one person, whoever that's going to be, and that might be the custodian, that's where, who it has been, it's a great system in that the messaging gets back, it comes full circle. So as it gets through each portion of the, the process, that custodian is getting the fact that it's gone into a work in progress state, or then it gets to the point where after the technician has been there, it's closed, or completed. That gives them the opportunity to say, wait a minute, timeout, this part is fixed, but they need to come back and put the wall back together, let's say. And so that helps with the quality assurance part of it, and so because as the user, they're putting that in, they're, just like Civic Plus, they're getting those messages back to be able to say, okay, XYZ has been completed, I want to go and, I wasn't here that day, I want to go and make sure that this is actually the case. At that point, then they're able to close the ticket, and it's officially closed. So that's something that we've actually been, been working on, and, and there were some parts of it that were, that needed improvement to clean that part up, but I can tell you there have been literally thousands of work orders completed over the course of this year.
Thank you, and I do feel that we have made progress, and I want to, I don't want this to seem as a criticism to either you or Mr. Underwood, but in, really in the, in solidarity with my colleagues' motions here, we're trying to get a handle on this to be able to, first of all, have people in the buildings have a sense of empowerment, that they see a problem, it's going to be addressed in some kind of timely way, and to also have that transparency for us to see what's happening, what's not happening. And I know for my part, I've had frustration with number of items, years of trying to get lockers at the Bartlett School, shades for all the windows, and it's just, you know, it's very slow. It, meanwhile, our children and our staff are in these buildings, so I appreciate your being here tonight, and I appreciate the work, I do feel we're making progress, we're just looking to see that continue and perhaps speed up. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bahu?
This is to you, Mr. Underwood, but I'm not sure if Mr. St. Seer might want to speak to it. My fellow school, school committee person, Ms. Doherty, asked last meeting about the lockers that were in the budget over at the Bartlett School, and I know, you know, you just touched on them. And I also know there's water bubbler issues over there, simply because, you know, the kids can't fill the water, you know, containers, and they have a lot of students there that are in wheelchairs and such like that, so they really, you know, it gets hot in the building and such like that. And I know the, the last budget, the, the lockers and the bubblers were earmarked to be fixed. During my walkthrough over at the Bartlett School, there was also, you know, a lot of ceiling tiles that were sort of, you know, broken down, there was actually a piece of air, there was an air vent that was, what should I say, hanging on one of its supports, only one, and it had three supports on it. And, you know, you worry if a basketball goes up that high, or if something happens, you hate to see it come crashing down and become, you know, an issue, you know, for someone getting hurt, or, you know, something else happening. And lastly, over at the Bartlett School, is the handicap ramp. I know we put up a ramp, you know, recently, but we didn't put up the guards for the ramp. And, you know, they have a, you know, again, they have a lot of students that are in wheelchairs over there, so the issue becomes, you know, they can't really go out to gym because they, they can't get, go down that ramp, and if they can't go out to the gym by not going out that ramp, the other kids can't go out to gym either. So that's sort of, you know, is becoming an issue as well, so, you know, and I hate to sort of just give you a punch list of more stuff to do, but I do know that, you know, it's important that, you know, the Bartlett School's lockers and water bubblers were something that was touched on, and the ramp was sort of partially done, but not all the way done, and, you know, the, the, the vent is something that could be pretty dangerous, so, please.
So, so I'll give you a rundown, we had, in, I know Jack, Mrs. Doherty, Committee Manager Doherty is, is interested in these, we had several big projects that we were doing the last couple of years that took much longer than we anticipated. We had the bubbler project, we had the Bartlett School project, we had windows in most of our schools that were almost impossible to lift and close, we had screens and shades that we needed to replace, and I know I'm probably missing a couple, but, so the water bubblers went through a long process of identifying each, each need for the bubbler, what it was in, but then we had to have a designer go out and put the project together. That finally went out for bid, then we had to have the ESER funding for it. So that project is, is just got, came to, I won't say completions, but we've got the money, we've got the project, we've got the bubblers, we've got that, that's going to start any day now, and we would expect that all to be done, if not before the summer, I'd say before the summer's over, there's 165 or 160, somewhere in that neighborhood of them, in different types of construction methods that need to take place, block walls, drywall, et cetera. So that's going to happen. The windows that weren't opening and closing throughout the district are going to be finished up over February vacation, we've already did, I think, about eight or nine schools, I think there was 14 schools that had aluminum windows that met that criteria for repairs, that will all be done over February vacation. I think there's another $300,000 invested in that. We fixed and repaired all of the screens in the district that were designed with screens, so we didn't add any, just to windows that didn't have them, but we've repaired all of the schemes, the screens in the district. That, the lockers, I forgot about the lockers, we had the lockers under contract and ready to be done last year, timeline and time just ran out for us, we had to get it done during that summer program, I mean, that summer hours fell through the cracks, we weren't able to get it done in that timeline, it's back on track to be completed this summer at the Bartlett School. What else do we have? Was there something else they had mentioned?
The lockers, you said.
Yeah, the lockers will be done this summer, bubblers will be done.
Contact.
I'd have to look through the work orders and find specifically what is, I can certainly go by and check it out and make sure it gets addressed. Yeah.
Let me ask you one more question, do we need more maintenance workers?
Do we need what?
More maintenance workers.
Oh, of course.
It seems like we had, you know, over 30 at some point, and then.
Of course we do, I mean, we, you look at the work order system, I mean, a lot of the, the majority of our work orders are HVAC related, we were shorthanded HVAC people for over a year now, we're just now starting, DPW's just starting to build their team up now, but in a, in a district this large, you probably could, in, you know, this many schools, you probably never have enough DPW workers, so of course we could use more. It's what the, what the, the funding and tax basis allows us to hire, but I know that DPW and this administration that we've got now is probably the best direction the school department has been going, we have a great team behind us right now, they're filling those vacant positions, so I think, I think we're, you know, things, things are happening all the time in the right direction.
Thanks a lot.
Evident by the last real cold weather we had, too, you know, typically, you know, in past years, when these cold weather snaps, we'd have, you know, all sorts of, you know, issues, broken pipes, failures in boilers, we had two schools during that cold weather we had a couple of problems with, but they're rectified very quickly, so that alone tells you how far we've come in just, you know, the past year or so. Hope that answers your questions.
If you don't mind, if, just to tag on, one of the other questions you had was about the handicap.
Close to it, Mr. St. Seer.
And so there is a handicap ramp on the other side of the building, it's a couple classrooms down, that there's been the, the one that they've had access to all along from that floor. We decided to move forward because we were going in the idea of, of weather working in our favor to be able to try and move forward to get that new ramp installed this year, even though it was happening during the school year. In light of the fact that it's a handicap ramp, the railings that are going on to it are field measured once the work is complete for the ramp. There's about a six-week lead time for the, for the rails to be fabricated, so you'll be seeing rails there in the next couple of weeks for an install, so that's coming very soon, but it wasn't a forgotten thing or left out, okay?
Great, and, you know, and I thank you guys for coming down here and filling us in, I mean, you know, there's a lot of, you know, items that need to be fixed in our school district, and it's, it's important that we sort of share the information and try to get as much information out there to the public so that they can understand that we, we're working on it, and you guys have been absolutely wonderful, you know, filling us in, going to meetings, sharing, you know, all the information, and getting as much work as you can done, so thank you for all of that as well.
I appreciate that, and I guess one thing I would just tag on to, to the comment about maintenance workers, the, the thing that we're looking at to, to help put some perspective on, you know, over 3 million square feet of school space, and the city has 13 skilled tradesmen within the Lands and Buildings Division. That's a lot to cover, and I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying, it's what's, what is going to be realistic and how you pick the priorities. Obviously, we go to safety all the time first, but there's no two ways about it, it can get ahead of you, you have 16,000 plus kids that are going through, and, and just like at home, things can happen, you know, there's, there's always going to be something to, to go after and repair. Okay, thank you.
I agree, thank you.
Great. And we're good to go? Excellent. So Superintendent would just explain the school dude process and how tracking works, and Mr. Lay's point about once quarterly will, will come soon?
Please.
Great.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed, no, motion passes. 513, request Superintendent provide the committee with a report on the policy practice for identifying students with learning disabilities and emotional anxieties.
Mr. Mayor, you skipped one of my motions, my second motion.
We took them both at the same time.
Okay.
We did, we did 511 and 512 together.
Oh, this, my second motion was about IT.
Yes, we took them both together, we did 511 and we did 512, we did them both. It was, it was vote a lot, and, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good. 513 by Ms. Doherty, request Superintendent provide the committee with a report on the policy practice for identifying students with learning disabilities and emotional anxieties to offer special educational services and 504 plans as early as possible in a school career, segmented by Ms. Martin, registered speaker?
Laura Ortiz.
Laura Ortiz, resident Lowell, can I just say a quick thing on the one prior, because I did register to speak, on the, on the school dude? Two things, number one, if the school dude list is given out, there's a lot of areas, especially with open tickets, that are actually secure areas, and they should not be just handed out to everyone, so I would say with caution, usually when we get the public records requests, they go through the law office, they're redacted, especially on open orders, doors missing, any security, I think Dr. Hall could say, I think it's exemption N for safety. And the second thing, too, was under Mr. Bahu's point, for. And the second thing too was under Mr. Byer's point, for under chapter 74, you have an entire vocational school as well as you have the after dark program, which have students. Why can't students help with the maintenance school dude list? Why can't they, you know, be hired, you know, under chapter 74, even if it's working at night and kick through some of the things that, you know, that need to get done? I, I don't really know. Some of them, you know, obviously not, you know, mold areas and all that, but you've got so many qualified students that, I think it's sophomore year on maybe junior and senior that, you know, why can't we take advantage of that? You've also gotten a Shoba Valley Tech, you've got a, I forget, there's a few more of tech schools, Lawrence Tech, I think it is. You've got so many students that love their job and that could get through these work orders real quickly and maybe be hired at last. And I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't hire more maintenance workers, but why not get these students interested in school maintenance and maybe working for schools? For the 6, 5.13, I wanted to talk about that. So child finds and IDA require that these students already be identified and located. So I'm kind of concerned that, and I do appreciate this motion, but I'm a little bit concerned because in the special education, I think it was a handbook policy that I think was signed in November, that is kind of bypassing that and it's having school administration instead, where the teachers are delaying the referral and going instead to the school administration who's then deciding support and accommodations for these students. This is, you know, IDA and child find are federal laws. This is just something that, that should automatically be done. And so I'm greatly concerned for the amount of students on the discipline list that continue to get suspended, kicked out of school, et cetera, and they don't have 504 IEP plans. Yet we can see in the central school health services data going back to 2014 to the present, that these students, not only did they qualify, that they should have been allowed accommodations. And especially as you get to the ages of the high school, that, you know, you've got ADHD, you've got anxiety PTSD, you've got a bunch of disabilities that are going to show up more and more as the supports in the classroom get kind of pulled back as the students get older. So instead of disciplining them, I'm not quite sure why we are focused more on, you know, intervention on the school side, instead of having that important special education evaluation referral, getting these kids tested, figuring out what disabilities they have, and getting them the support that they're required to, and the majority of students that are not supported are the minorities. And it greatly disappoints me that going from kindergarten all the way to graduation without a single federal support that was required to be in, in place, and the statistics and data is showing this. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. And I guess really that was the crux of this motion, is when we had the discussion at our last meeting about chronic absenteeism and what are some of the reasons, what are some of the efforts we're undertaking to turn that around? I had a very interesting email from a parent who talked about this idea of chronic absenteeism for students with disabilities that aren't being identified for special education services early enough. And that's why I'm asking for us to really look at what we're doing as a district to make sure that we're identifying these students' needs as soon as possible. Because it really should be about the services they need to get them to school, whether it's anxiety or whatever issue is keeping them home, to not be focused on discipline, to be looking at what are, you know, what are the services the student is looking at. So that was my intention with this motion. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Do you have comments, Mr. Bahu? Oh, great, excellent, thank you. 5.14 by Ms. Dougherty. Request Superintendent work with the mayor to provide the committee with a job description timeline to establish a full-time executive assistant to the school committee to fulfill all duties and functions relative to the committee's work. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Hon. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I just want to say as someone who has been on the school committee for a while, and I remember the days when the superintendent actually had two executive assistants. One was very much focused on the school committee work, and especially not so much, this isn't really directed at you Superintendent Skinner, but after the last two administrations, it was clear to me that we needed a school committee, that the school committee needs consistency with one person recording all our meeting minutes, creating all our agendas, polling us for our subcommittee meetings, who reports to us. Very similar to how the city council has it set up, that, that I think would have, would solve a lot of issues I've had with motions being lost that were made on the floor, people showing up for meetings not realizing they had been canceled, just different things like that, that I think if we had a dedicated executive assistant, we would be working much more efficiently, much more streamlined. Thank you.
Just from the chair, I think I'll support the motion. It is a benefit to the members of the school committee, very similar to what we deal with the city council, it's very helpful. So look forward to work with the superintendent and getting a report back. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, Mr. Lay?
I just have a question on, on this motion as well, that throughout my four terms now on a school committee, I didn't see that we have a, a need for this position. Why is it now? And what is the, what is the real, I guess, the, the real responsibility of this new person? Because we never have a position, I never seen anybody have this position in, in the past.
So Ms. Dougherty just gave a pretty explicit reason for it. If you want to give it again, sure.
And I'm open to other people's thoughts. I'm just going to speak from my own experience. So there's a certain amount of consistency. We, I've made motions on the floor that disappeared. And, and this isn't with the current administration. I don't mean to be looking at you Superintendent Skinner. And I, we, I made motions where I said, we need to have a subcommittee meeting, and it's voted with the majority, and the subcommittee meeting never gets polled, we never get, and then I would ask about where's that, well, we need a vote from the committee. And we would have to go back into the minutes and literally even watch the meeting again. I mean, it was incredibly frustrating for me with just trying to do the work of the committee. And again, as I said, that was in past administration. I'm looking at the city council model where they have their own clerk. You yourself, Mr. Lay, came to a meeting that you didn't know had been canceled, right? Because right now, we, the superintendent position used to have two secretaries or executive assistants, now has one. That was a budget cut that was made years ago, which by the way, was the reason we lost the Title I position. It was a budget cut because we were in dire straits. And I think that at that time, the person managing it on their own had so many decades of experience doing it, was able to kind of juggle it. But it's, it's like two full-time jobs. And the work of this committee really requires somebody who can consistently cover all our meetings, make our agendas, do the polling, and so it's, it's a position that, instead of having a part-time night position and somebody doing the day work, I see it as one role with some hybrid hours. You know, that was how I'm thinking of it. Thank you.
From what I, from what I hear, and thinking that a few miss out here and there, yes, we don't want to see that happening. And I think we ought to look into making it better, instead of hiring one person, hiring an extra body, full-time body, just to do that. We know, I mean, we, we have been complaining a lot about having heavy in the central office. We have too many people working in central office, adding this one more position, I think just add to that complaint. So I feel that we don't need that position, just my opinion. So I'm not going to support this motion because of that. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the conditions that Ms. Dougherty discussed are, I believe, an agreement with Ms. Dougherty unacceptable. It's not acceptable that this body passes a motion and that that motion goes missing. It's not acceptable that meetings are canceled and people show up because they weren't notified, and so on. And I'm really grateful that Ms. Dougherty made an exception to point out that that has not occurred under the current administration. I'm confident that I can, that the requirements for the committee and the kinds of expectations you have can be met with my current staffing, and I believe you should hold me accountable for that. And so one consideration might be that you postpone this for some time until you see if that's actually what's happening. And so then we'd be able to determine if the need exists or not. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin? Six sheyes, one day.
Motion's being completed. I would hit the subcommittees. I need a motion to bundle agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 together by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, passes. So we'll take 6.1, approval of the minutes of the human resources and labor relations subcommittee meeting on November 14th, 2023, and approval of the minutes of the HR relations subcommittee meeting January 24th, 2024. Motion to accept the reports as a report of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, motion approved. Seven, reports to the superintendent. 7.1, response to motions by Mr. Rossi, 11724 regarding school. Oh, I, will you do it now?
It's fine, I don't need to. The first meeting was old, we've talked about it already, so it was just a, it was legitimately just a report of the minutes. Second one, really the key items are going to come up in our, the job description, so I'm fine to let it go. Thank you.
Apology. 7.1, motion responses, response to motions by Mr. Rossi, July, January 17th, 2024, regarding school transportation.
Thank you for this response. I guess it's just hard because we don't know if someone's going to be calling in. But any type of prior communication with parents would be ideal as soon as we know because the parents are the ones that are left in the lurch, the students are the ones that are left in the lurch. I mean, we're, we're in a state of bare necessity in transportation, so I think anything we can do to inform parents as soon as possible about what's going on is essential. So thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I just wanted to assert that I think Mr. Rossi's response is very reasonable and reasonable expectation, and we will attempt to reach out to parents and students as soon as we know that there's a change. Thank you.
7.2, budget update FY 2324. We have one registered speaker.
Laura Ortiz.
Laura Ortiz, resident of Lowell. So the, thank you so much for letting me speak. I always forget to say that first. So the question that I had is, is the budget update and the statistical data, it's, it's like not broken down. It is very hard to read, very hard to understand. And also, I could be wrong, but I don't really see anywhere the figures for, for the budget that's going to talk about, you know, what, what is it going to cost to fix everything? You know, all these roof leaks. I, I think the last time, I think it was like 302 in the 26 schools. I know Ricky Underwood said that they spent, I think he said like $10 million. So I know you're working hard, and I'm not trying to critique that, but, you know, what is the actual cost of fixing these schools so that these children no longer have sick building syndrome and all that? And, you know, when you do the budget, you know, you're talking about language barriers, you're talking about, you know, a lot of our community is from out of the country. Like, when you do things like this, it should be broken down in a way that's, you know, easy to read. It should be in multiple languages. And again, I feel like there's a tremendous language barrier. I think there's an education barrier. I think the statistical data is missing. None of this makes sense half the time. And I think unless you've got public records or you understand the departments or you understand the different areas of the school, maybe to you all it makes sense, but I think to the rest of the people it doesn't, and this just happens continuously. So my only question I would ask is, is, is there any way possible, and I don't know if I can ask the mayor to ask the superintendent, is it possible to, to do the budget where it's actually, you know, the parents and the citizens of the community friendly? Where they actually get what you're talking about, they get the money, they get the breakdown? Is it possible to break this down into more data? You know, like some of the requests have asked for a certain amount of students in the class, like can you actually break this budget down so that we, you know, people are going to be able to understand it? I don't know if I can, but anyhow, that was the concern that I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am happy to see that on attachment B2, on the bottom there, there's a, an item Jean Doc purchased for $2.4 million. I'm excited to see that because that was one of the building that I proposed, made a motion to propose to, to, to consider buying. But seeing that on this list, I'm happy, but I don't know anything about it. So I'm wondering if we can get information, what it is, and when are we planning to buy it?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, the, the money is set aside for that purpose. It's a placeholder of sorts. It's not indicating the price of the property, but I think it's a reasonable estimate. And, and we need to, we need to account for the funds in our budget if we're going to be able to purchase that property. The process for purchasing a property is much more involved than I ever anticipated, but I have great support from the city administration, and I, and, and it's progressing as quickly as possible. I, I'm hopeful that we will be able to complete the purchase of that property, I want to say at some point between now and the summertime. That's not a guarantee, but, but that's the kind of time I'm talking about. If, if it were to, to work out, and we'd be very grateful for that, we certainly need this space, there would be considerable amount of work needed on the building to have it be actually ready to be a public school. And so the anticipated opening of that building for school students would be the following school year.
I would just caution, any talk about this, please? Go ahead, Mr. Lay.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
It's an executive session matter, but just go ahead.
Oh, okay. I will not go further than that, but I'm wondering if we could say walkthrough, take a look? Would that be something that, possible? Perhaps?
Just Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Lay?
Okay.
When, when appropriate, thank you.
All right, sure, I will stop.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Awesome. 7.3, preliminary budget information. Anything? 7.4, filling resource on our update. I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, 7.1 through 7.4, as reports of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Before we take a vote, Mr. Superintendent, you got something?
I do, thank you. It's a subtle but important point, I think, and I'm going to offer to put it on an agenda for a future meeting for us to consider. But I, I've noticed in recent months that we, that we have, we have heavy agendas, important agendas, and it, they include a lot of motions, which are welcome. But the motions are essentially sort of new business that you're tasking us with responding to. And then the reports that we're into now in, in area seven are the work of the administration to provide you the information that you've asked for. And sometimes it feels as though that part of the agenda is shortchanged because of all the discussion we have on, on new motions. I think we need both. I'm just wondering if at some point we might agree to have the reports of the superintendent be earlier on the agenda before the motions. So we report back to you on what you asked for prior to you requesting new information. All of it is still on the same agenda, but, and again, I don't expect you to decide on that tonight, but I wanted to make an explanation for why it could be an item for discussion at a future meeting. Thank you.
So it's been, motion was made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Passes. 7.5, home education. I need a motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeys.
A new business, 8.1, consideration of options for March 5th, primary election. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, the, there was an over. School committee members, the, there was an oversight in producing a calendar for this school year in that March 5th, which is primary voting day in Massachusetts, was included as a full school day. And so, this item was put on the agenda to request a, a, a change to the, to the published calendar so that we take March 5th, a primary date, as a day off school, which would be made up at the end of the school year. We need your approval to make that change.
Mr. Conway?
Mr. Conway?
Mr. Conway, sorry. Yeah, we're, we're worried to go first, but if you want, we have 8.2, then we're to motion them both together. Makes sense? Sorry, it's been a long night.
No, when's it going to be for March 5th to be a day off?
Oh, so you want to do it, you want to do it tonight?
We were talking about it.
Looking for a motion tonight to take the day off, if you want?
Yeah.
We can't do that without your approval.
Oh.
So, we need a motion, yes, please.
Yes, a motion by, I apologize. Bush by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty to take the 5th off. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Lay.
Can I talk about the next school committee meeting date? Because it falls in the vacation week.
Point of privilege request by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Lay, go ahead.
Can I request to have that meeting moved to a different date, maybe the week after?
I can, any questions, like?
I'm sorry, I turned off the microphone. So, our next regular school committee meeting falls in the vacation week, so I'm, I'd like to make a motion to move that meeting to the following week.
You could make a motion to cancel the meeting.
I, I'd rather move it to the next week.
So, we're going to have back-to-back meetings, right? No? But you have one the week after. Mr. Conway, is there a motion to cancel the meeting for school vacation week, seconded by Mr. Bahu? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Six yeas, one nay.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. 8.2, second reading of remote work, hybrid schedule. Any comments? Ms. Dougherty, just a vote.
Motion to approve.
By Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call. Sure, Ms. Martin.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate getting this back. I do think that for the purposes of, you know, anyone who has been tracking this, you know, really, the, the impetus behind this is that we're really not looking at, at remote work being a, a large part of the work that happens in Lowell Public Schools. That the intention really is to ensure that staff are in and available for parents or teachers, or, you know, that we recognize that the bulk of the work that's done by the Lowell Public Schools really does need to be done in purpose, in person. So, I appreciate that we do have an actual policy in place, so that's great. And I think that it does allow us to kind of, you know, give that, that option for extremely short periods of time, whether it's a day, up to three days. But I appreciate that we kind of have something in writing that, based on our vote tonight, it will be specifically included in our policy book, so that we'll be able to move forward with that as part of our ongoing documentation. Thanks.
Anything else? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
8.3, request school committee participation, POG learning excursion. I need a motion to elect a school committee person.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that we have Ms. Phillips give us a little rendition of the purpose and the intent here? Ms. Phillips, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So, since 2019, 2020, Lowell High School has been in the process of developing a portrait of a graduate, which is kind of rethinking what are the 21st century skills and competencies that we want our students to graduate with. There's an opportunity for the high school to take a team to visit another district, another school that has implemented, implemented a portrait and some of the, some of the changes within, you know, 21st century learning. And as part of the team, because there's change in practice as well as change in policy, we thought it was good timing to invite a policymaker along this learning trip with us. And so, we're open to someone who might have the background and the time to help, to help, you know, advise us on this trip.
Ms. Dougherty?
So, while I recognize this is only a trip to Connecticut, not some exotic location, and it would require three days off from work, I am willing to do it, I have the time, unless one of my colleagues would prefer to go. I just want to leave that an option because I don't have to do it.
I'm going to nominate Jackie Dougherty to...
But I would like to ask while I'm speaking that our student representative also be on the list. Are you on the list?
I didn't even know about it, but I'd like to go.
Yes, I think that as a member of the, our high school representative on the school committee, so I don't know if we would be able, I mean, it does mention that the group going includes students. I know it was an application and a grant that we got, so I want to make sure that's okay, but I think it would be kind of a two-for. It is okay?
So, we would have to make the request. The team is at 12, and I do believe that students were already invited to go, but we would have to make the request to the organization for a 13th member. But if that is approved, we'd be happy to bring the student representative.
Okay, so, nobody else from the committee wants to go, huh?
There's a motion on the floor, tell me, Ms. Dougherty.
Okay. Oh, oh, I think Mr. Lay would like to go there, he said. Is that what you said?
I said I went to school there.
Oh, okay.
By Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. Ms. Dougherty, you accept? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
8.4, approval of new job descriptions and permission to post. I need a motion to approve the McKinney-Vento liaison and permission to post by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Dougherty?
So, this 8.4, I had asked that on the agenda, we name the positions. It says 8.4, approval of new job descriptions, so are, they're not named on the agenda, so I go into the report. I just lost my place here. What are the job descriptions that we're voting on now?
You have them in your packet, Ms. Dougherty. They are attached to a, a cover page written by Dr. Hall. Dr. Hall's available if you have further questions.
Right, so we were, we're looking at a couple of this tonight because we have the transportation ones too. But this one, 8.4, is the McKinney-Vento liaison, is that correct? And the assistant FRC coordinator? So, as you may recall...
Yeah.
Individually, right. But as you may recall, Superintendent, it's going to, I did ask a couple of meetings ago, or the la, that we have the job descriptions listed so that people can see on the agenda what, you know, the name of the position, not just job descriptions.
Understood, I'll make sure to do that. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm not supporting...
If, just to make a suggestion, if we go in order, the first one to be considered is the McKinney-Vento.
That's what's read off for us, yep.
So, I, I have concerns about the McKinney-Vento transportation one. I know later on in the agenda, we're going to be adding to the transportation department, and I know we've added several positions to support McKinney-Vento already at the Family Resource Center. So, I don't, I don't know. I have some concerns about that.
Ms. Dougherty, would it be helpful to hear rationale of why they're being put forward, and then you'd have an opportunity to ask questions?
Ms. Martin, you want to hear the rationale for us before you speak, or you want to speak? Mr. Superintendent?
Dr. Hall, please.
So, in the past couple of years, our homeless population has increased, I believe right about 12% of the district right now. And so, there are different flexibilities that are provided to families and students experiencing homelessness. One of them is transportation. It is outside of the regular transportation policy, and it is individualized. So, that's not only homeless families attending our school district, but also homeless families who may attending, may be attending other school districts. So, there are a lot of flexibilities outside of our regular policies. Transportation is one of them. It is time-intensive, and it's specific to transportation. And so, that is a recommendation that we made in, in consultation with, with DESI, our McKinney-Vento state liaison, that this was an area, given our increasing population, that did make sense. Our, most of our McKinney-Vento positions right now are grant-funded. And so, this is, this past year, we did not increase funding for McKinney-Vento, but I did designate one of our district support specialists to be responsible for McKinney-Vento services. So, it, we did not add funding for McKinney-Vento, we just made it a core responsibility of, of one of our district support.
May I add, please, that, that in consideration of the number of homeless families having increased, and you may want to add that, that the families at the In-N-Out Conference Center coming there, we're anticipating up to 250, 260 families, they are considered homeless, even though they're living in that, in a place. This transportation being discussed can include local, but it also includes students who choose to stay at school in their, in the district that sent them to Lowell. This is a, there's a considerable amount of work involved, it's not a trivial position, and there is a considerable amount of need, and it's not on the decline, it's on the uptick.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, I would just want to add, you know, this is obviously, I think, a huge need for us in recognizing that at the beginning of the school district, the beginning of the school year, this was needed. Given what's gone, what's kind of happening in our city and our, all of our collective efforts to manage a challenging situation for these families, I think the, adding on this specific position to support the transportation effort, I mean, I know that at this point, you know, we do have, you know, significant numbers of the, the families are maintaining their current district. But the reality is, is that as new families are coming in from further away, that's not going to be as much of an option. And looking out even a few more months, pretty much everyone's going to be shifting into Lowell Public Schools by the time we get to next September. So, having this position in place, I think, is going to be really vital to ensure that we're able to accommodate the, the, the situation in a large sense, but also the specific situation at the In-N-Out Conference Center.
Any other comments? All roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Need a motion to approve the Assistant Family Resource Center Coordinator slash Student Center Specialist and Permission to Post by Ms. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Conway. Any comments? Roll call.
Mia, Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Four yeas, three nays.
8.5, approval of summer pay rates for summer cafeteria operations. I need a motion to approve the pay rates for summer cafeteria operations by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Any comments? Roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
8.6, request for approval of transportation staffing proposal, including transportation, routed job description approval and posting, and approval of April 1 hire date successor for transportation director. I need a motion to approve the transportation...
Just wanted to make a quick recommendation that we separate those two things.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was, the clerk for. I need a motion to approve the transportation routed position and permission to post by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Comments? Roll call.
Mia, Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Need a motion to approve the transportation director position with an April 1 hire date for successor and permission to post by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Comments? Roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Yeah, so I started to go back to this one here, so. Part of 8.4, we approved the liaison and the Family Resource Coordinator. So, I'm going to go to Mr. Hall for a quick comment.
Members of the committee, we are also asking for, for permission to post or hire 0.4 and 0.6 positions where we can get, for example, social workers who are willing to work two to three days per week. So, that was part of the memo as well. I do understand now why we want to separate those, so I apologize for that, but this has been pending for a while, so I asked for permission to hire people working two to three days a week.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hall, Ms. Martin?
Just a quick question. So, this would be as a, as a result of our challenge in filling these positions. So, the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the situation. We have open social worker positions, by allowing us to, to do these reduced hours, we'd be able to get more people, more social workers on staff, but it wouldn't be replacing a full-time position. Like, we're not trading down to a part-time. That's my question. That's my question.
Correct, yes.
Any other comments or questions? So the motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay, and that's the request to authorize .4 and .6 positions. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. O'Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
8.7, budget transfer. Need motion to approve a budget transfer of $134,545.78 by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Lay. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. O'Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
9, convention slash conference request. Need motion to, I said, we'll take them all separately. We have one of them. 9.1, overnight request, Lowell High School State Liaison Conference in Lowell, Mass. Motion approved by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. O'Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
9.2, overnight request, Lowell High School Outdoor Invictus Club in Russell, Mass. Need motion to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. O'Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
9.3, overnight request, educational tour to Cambodia. We have two registered speakers.
Laura Ortiz. Do I say it again? Still?
Come on, man.
All right. Laura Ortiz, resident of Lowell. So about this, we've got a tremendous amount of Asian students that are not receiving free appropriate public education. They're disciplined on a daily basis, and they are leaving school. And so I, I think it's lovely, the intent to want to go to Cambodia, and I'm not discrediting that or saying that that's not important. I just question the amount of staff that are going to Cambodia, that it's for three weeks, and it's pulling $100,000 from the children in the district, and I think possibly maybe even $5,000 extra to add a school committee member. We have so many things in Lowell Public Schools that are broken that these students cannot access on a daily basis. So I do not understand the intent of taking $100,000 when we could be supporting these students, we could be giving them five of fours in IEP plans, especially in the high school. And I honestly don't understand why you have to go to Cambodia to understand the students that are here. You can talk to them. You can find out what's wrong. You can talk to their families. You can do outreach in the community. It does not take $100,000, and this is just another one of the ways that Lowell Public Schools frivolously spends and segregates money away from these students and is just absolutely incredulous. You know, and it was really confusing, was this motion from 2021 that all of a sudden got brought forward by question, conflict of interest. It just, the appearances alone, you know, it was very confusing, even the way that it was worded and the documents that it showed. I couldn't even follow it. And, you know, I get a lot of public records, and I usually can follow them. I cannot follow this. And I don't really understand it. And it's absolutely disingenuous to say that you have to go to another country to understand the students that are here, that are suffering in our schools, that are dealing with sick building syndrome that is going on for multiple decades, and we do not see change. And it is absolutely deplorable to once again have a, you know, whether it's a photo op, a vacation, I'm not really quite sure. But I just don't understand the necessity for three weeks when the students are here. They're here. What can you do for them here? What do they need? You know, what are you missing? What are you failing at? And it is just, I mean, if this is the way that the new school committee is going to run things, then I'm greatly disappointed for our people. We're going to be pushed more and more into segregation, and you have a duty to represent these students here, you know. And this is just, none of this makes any sense. So I don't know, are we going to see a whole bunch of other, you know, $100,000 trips around the world when you can be doing stuff right here? Because they're here, and they need services here. And they need staffing. They need staffing ratios. We've got, you know, we have social workers working a couple of days a week. These students need 1 to 250 ratio. We've been giving you statistics for years. You're having these students go from kindergarten to graduation, and you're not providing that.
Please wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, ding ding ding. They're not getting free appropriate public education. So I would kindly ask that you don't do a trip with this many people, that you don't, and especially too, because I don't even think the school year is over, and it looks like it starts on June 15th, I think, with the snow days, we're going, you know, out. But I just, this is just another one of the, you know, mystery decisions made in the dark that no one knows what's going on for the purpose of it. And I say that with respect. So I'm hoping that you instead do something for the students that are here in this district that need it, and perhaps stop the discipline rate, stop them dropping out of school.
Ms. Ortiz, thank you. Well, all three minutes.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
The ding 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 would have helped.
Sherri Barboza?
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. I did see this also on the agenda, and I realized that it was grant-funded. I saw, I read it from 21, as you were saying, that it was originally talked about. It's a lot of people going. My phone died, so I don't have the paperwork in front of me. But I believe it was 15 people that are going. Superintendent, intended, Skinner is intending on going, as well as Mr. Lay. And I understand being culturally sensitive, but our people are here. Our people are in our city. Have we taken the time to go meet with them in their homes, or meet with them on a common ground here in our cities, in our communities, where they are? We have a high number of Cambodians, and that's why you've presented that, in our city. You could attend multiple events. I'm sure there's plenty of people who would welcome you in so that you could become culturally sensitive here, where you are, where the students and the families are, instead of leaving for two weeks and then still also having your vacation time available to you when you need to take it. One of the premises that other persons stated that our superintendent Skinner was a great candidate is that he's an immigrant, and he's experienced what it's like being an immigrant. Granted, you're an immigrant from Ireland, you're not an immigrant from Brazil or from Cambodia, but we're all here, and we are not going to Ireland to see what it was like for you coming over here, because at this point, you're here. And we need to see how everyone is here. I appreciate you trying to understand other cultures, but the struggles are here for our students here, where the parents are working here. In Cambodia, it's a completely different scenario. It's not the same as it is here. This is where our families are once again. We have a huge migrant population that we just talked about that's being infused into our schools, and understanding their struggle that's happening right now is utterly important. The other point that I did want to make, that we're constantly talking about hiring, we need to focus on the recruiting and hiring of individuals that reflect our population at all levels, administratively, our teachers, our powers, and our staff. This will help us increase our cultural understanding and sensitivity. Two weeks for pertinent administrations not be present and then be able to take their vacation does not seem appropriate. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Any comments from the members? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure to put this motion in. When I first got elected to the Lowell School Committee, I was fortunate to have the opportunity to go visit schools throughout the city of Lowell. And many staff who have gone through this kind of trip in the past, they have made recommendations that they learn a lot from taking that trip. What they learned from living in Lowell is not the same as when they go see what's over there, because the people living in Lowell is different, and you don't really see what's going on until you go dive in and see what's going on over there. And some of them even quote-unquote "changed their life" when they come back. They became better teachers. You know, the school that I, the staff that I talked to, all of them supported me to encourage me to find a way to organize this trip. Teachers that I talked to from Stockloza, Merklin, Panya Arts, staff from those schools have gone. I'm sure there were more, but those are the only schools, staff that they talked to, and all of them encouraged that this trip is important for those who've never been to Cambodia, and for those who don't know about Cambodia. So when I made this motion, my intent was to aim for those who don't know about Cambodia and those who have never been to Cambodia to experience from this trip. It is not a vacation. It is, there will be work involved, and what I expect coming back from this trip is not an excursion, believe me. It is, it is an educational trip. When they come back, I was hoping that they could convey what they learned, what they expected and turned out to be what not expected, convey that to their staff over here so that we all can learn something from it and make our school better. It's not about me, it's not about Cambodia, it's about making Lowell better. So we went, you know, and we, that motion, when I made that motion, we did have staff come on to the meeting, talk in favor of it, and then it took time that we finally have the money in the budget for this year to go. So I don't want people to think that this is a vacation or a time to have an exotic place to go to. So I hope that that would clear up some of the questions that we have here. We went through a lot of processes to get to this point. You know, it's not easy to come up with this list. It's not what, completely what I want, but, you know, you all have a saying, you all have a final vote on what to do. And I wish I can stay here to talk more, to answer any questions, but I did talk to the ethics, state ethics, and they recommended me not to involve in this discussion. So before the discussion begin, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just a quick question. Where is the, excuse me, where is the money coming from? Through you to the superintendent?
It's coming from the school department budget as directed by the school committee, previous school committee voted and directed us to take the money.
Okay, it's coming from the school department? I see. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, we don't have a motion or a second. Should we still just be talking about it?
So motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by?
I am not making a motion to support.
Is there a motion on the floor to talk about it?
All right, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion.
Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin.
So I'd like to say that when this motion first came up, I do recall the motion, and if you look at the words, it says to do a feasibility study, the feasibility of doing it. At that time, I thought it was ill-advised, but I figured, okay, we could look at it. Because I know, we have had trips to Cambodia. MCC led a grant proposal that was a Fulbright grant, that was a collaboration with Middle Sex Community College and Lowell Public Schools, and there were high expectations about how it was going to come back, impact student learning. It did not come out of our budget. We also have had the Cambodian community here in Lowell for nearly 40 years. And I know I've been able to attend Cambodian Rock Opera, the Encore Dance Group, several films. I know that we have a Lowell High School teacher who put together American Voices, a book, with students talking about their experiences. I know when we look at the enrollment information, that 22% of our students coming in are Spanish speakers, 11% are Portuguese. These are the newcomers coming into the community. So I have great reservations about taking $100,000 out of our budget to send 20 people, I think nine teachers, many administrators, many people making over $100,000, to go on a three-week trip to Cambodia, especially not under the umbrella of like a Fulbright scholarship program, where you know there's going to be a lot of accountability. I spent some time today thinking about what I would do instead with $100,000. And of course, right away, I went to the facility stuff, the window shades, the lockers at the Bartlett School. For three years, I've been trying to get that. Help with the STEM Academy over cost, we're looking at another $250,000. That, those modules are going to be like eight million for eight classrooms. We have to really think about if this project even makes sense anymore for us. The Jeanne Dakh building coming on, all right? Mold mitigation throughout, these are just facilities. But then I started thinking about the students. How about a summer program for entering kindergarteners who didn't get to participate in preschool? We could do that for $100,000. How about 80 Lowell High students get paid internships, $15 an hour, $1,200 over, you know, the course of the semester? Because many of our kids can't afford to do volunteer work to explore their careers. They have to do their after-school job, you know, I mean, or if we keep it to students, how about looking at real equity for our middle school students at the Bridge Program, who do not get transportation despite how far away they live? They don't have a gym. I think they used to have a basketball hoop, but it got damaged during some city whatever, and it never got replaced. I mean, this request is unconscionable. And I would ask you, through you, Superintendent Skinner, are you, were you planning to attend Cambodia for three weeks?
I was not planning to attend for three weeks. I hadn't planned to attend, but I was given the expectation that superintendent ought to be involved, and I agreed to go for a limited time.
I think this was a plan under the former superintendent. And as I said, it was presented to us as a motion to do a feasibility study. And then it appears before us that the money was in the budget. I was not aware that there were $100,000 put away in the budget this year for this, but I can tell you, I can think of a lot of other ways I would prefer to spend it. Thank you.
Mr. Conway? Go ahead, your hand up. Anybody else? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I just want to add, and I both appreciate and agree with my colleagues' sentiments around this. I do think that, you know, having sponsored, you know, by dint of a grant, we were able to send 10 educators to participate in this kind of a trip. That's great. I think that one of the key things that was in this initial motion was researching not just the feasibility, but the funding. It was looking at external funding to support this, recognizing that, you know, and there are certainly grants that exist and things like that that could be brought to bear that are specifically meant to support this kind of exchange program. Taking it from our general fund, I think, is inappropriate. I think the timing of it also, I agree that while school is still in session, that's challenging to have 20 individuals from across the district, both from the, you know, obviously the highest levels of administration, straight through with teachers, whose classrooms will need to be covered. That doesn't seem appropriate to me. And I think finally, what I'm most, what I'm most concerned about is that what's presented to us is basically saying, doesn't give us any kind of standards or goals or any kind of backup that we require when we have students going anywhere. We ask them to provide us, we'll ask those individuals, whether it's a teacher or other adult, to provide us with what the standards are that that school-based trip is going to address. And it's true when we send students anywhere in this country, it's true when they go on international trips. And they provide us with what exactly is going to be kind of accomplished in the trip. You know, I think cultural immersion, you know, absolutely, I don't dispute that there is great educational value to travel. But I do think that in terms of our priorities as a district, it's just not, this would not be an appropriate use of general funds, and that, you know, in order for me to be comfortable considering it, it would need to be external funds that were specifically kind of allocated and directed at this exact type of activity, whether that was from Fulbright Haze or any other, any other organization. I'd also say, just because the $100,000 that was apparently, is apparently being targeted in this, I believe that that was a combined fund, that also, that line item wasn't just for this trip. that also, that line item wasn't just for this trip, that there were other things that were expected to be paid out of that $100,000. I don't have the budget in front of me, so I'm, you know, but I do think that there were other things that that was kind of lumped in with as a $100,000 charge, and now that full $100,000 is being allocated to this one single activity, which in my mind is not appropriate either. So, I'm not comfortable supporting this.
Anybody else? Mr. Superintendent, what do you want to do here? You want to look for alternative funding, or you want to up and down vote on it?
Thank you for asking. I'm looking for school committee direction here, which I think means a vote, right? So, if you're, some of you members have spoken very clearly. I'd like to follow the will of the body, and I believe that I've been trying to do so based on what had occurred in the past. If the committee feels differently or wants to effect some of the changes that you're asking for, I think I need a motion and a vote on that.
Motion was first and seconded, it's roll call.
So, this is just voting the motion up or down, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Rourke?
No.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin?
No.
Six nays, one option.
Section 10 Communications, 10.1, letter from the Board of Health. One registered speaker.
Laura Ortiz.
Laura Ortiz, resident of Lowell. Thank you for letting me speak. Sorry that I registered on so many items. So, for this, my comment was that I'm thankful for the Board of Health. I spoke at the last Board of Health meeting and asked them if they could, you know, reiterate what the Bureau of Environmental Health did in an incredible job, which they always do when they come in and investigate the school air quality. But to also, you know, I feel buried in it was the part that talked about. And I know Ms. Doherty did school committee member, Doherty's spoken it. The rest of the 29 schools, you know, although I think the letter is eloquently written, I feel it, a tiny bit of it underscores the entire report. This report was necessary. The Bureau of Environmental Health, they could not come into every school, although we asked them to, especially with the 302 roof leaks and at the time, the 26 schools that were dealing with that. You know, we pulled records of sick building syndrome, you know, going back into the 1980s, you know. We've given the city of Lowell so much data and records from the archives of Bureau of Environmental Health on how important it is to have clean air. You're required to have clean air for your staff, and you're also required to have clean air for these students. And it is not fair that they continue to have awful, awful sick building syndrome air quality. And regardless that this report was in talking, you know, about the Pataque Memorial Almenter, they would have found the same decrepit, deplorable air in probably every school at this point. And given that, you know, nothing on the budget talks about the cost that the city should be spending on exactly how much it would cost to fix this entire problem. Every single thing is just kicking the can down the road. And although I'm grateful, you know, for this letter that the Board had written, you know, the fact that, you know, the school should be writing your own letter demanding that the city follow these guidelines, demanding that the moment that anyone walks into your public schools, that they face clean air. I just don't get it. We're talking from the 1980s through the Federal Court Disegregation Order all the way till now, you still have decrepit air, you know, through the renovations. You know, we can't blame it on that, you know. And, you know, I had asked Ricky Underwood about some of the maintenance problems when you have the big air conditions that are up on the roof. Is there any way that the law could look into? Can you get any type of insurance policies on when the building equipment causes a roof leak? You know, what is it going to take? And also for the school to have a position that tells the city to fix its buildings? This is a city problem, and I'm not trying to get upset at you all, but, you know, it's just really frustrating. Nothing is going to change, you know. No matter how many records that we get, it's still going to be the same air quality. And so, it's great for this letter, but what is the school committee going to do to demand that this get fixed? You're the school committee. You are our elected representatives. You're supposed to be representing these students. And it, I mean, what is it going to take? Was that three minutes? Thank you so much, Danny. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for letting me speak.
Any comments from the body? Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple things I want to bring up. A resident in the Riley School area contacted me the other day in regard to the condition of the American flag that was in front of the school. And this morning, I actually took a ride over there and took a look at it. And it certainly was in poor condition. You know, I certainly, I found it to be rather tattered and needs to be removed. Because I'll tell you, when you take a look at that, you know, again, the flag, it certainly represents the veterans and the brave women and men that serve to protect us all the time. So, I know through you, I think, well, maybe to you, Mr. Mayor, is there, can you reach out and have that taken care of? Or would it be the superintendent? And then, yes.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, and Mr. Conway, I'm really glad that you brought it forward, that that flag will be replaced tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the other, just a very quick thing here too, Mr. Mayor. A couple weeks ago, I had the pleasure to visit the Pine Arts School. And I certainly appreciated the tour by Principal Lang. I witnessed firsthand the many incredible educational programs that were actually in place. And you could see, you know, as somebody that's been in education for so many years, the learning that was happening in...
Is this about, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway, is this about the Board of Health report?
Sorry?
Is this about the Board of Health letter?
No.
All right, because we haven't taken a vote on that yet.
No, no, this is, no, no, so.
Okay.
Mr. Positive, thank.
Great, all right, it's awesome. Let's just do a motion to accept the letter from the Board of Health.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
I thought you kind of mixed in the American flag with the Board of Health.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Very conducive. We have a motion to accept the petition filed by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Mr. Conway? Please proceed.
All right, thank you. And I certainly saw when I visited there, the education that was going on in every room, in the corner of every, of that entire school. So, very, very impressed with it. And I mentioned to them, if they had an opportunity, if there was something that was happening in the school, please let me know. I'd like to, if I was available, I'd like to go and visit. And they did send me something in the mail to that musical SpongeBob, which I had no idea what that was all about, didn't have a clue. But I did show up, and I will tell you, the kids did an absolutely incredible job, and I wanted to give them a shout out. It was amazing. The kids, the staff, everyone was extremely happy. Again, I wasn't, I never heard of it before, but now I have. And I just wanted to congratulate everyone for doing a great job at the Pine Arts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Anything else? Ms. Doherty? Thank God. Seconded by Mr. Rossi. Good evening.